We call this regular council meeting to order here at City Hall, August 20th, 2019. We've got additions to the agenda. Chief Florida Department Heads, Unruh Brothers Waste LLC, a new business, engine for power plant, land bank, 10-minute executive session to discuss property acquisition, executive session, 10-minute executive session to discuss possible hire, and executive session, 10-minute executive session to discuss employee performance. Can I get a motion? So, so, a second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Citizens' comments. Do we have any citizens' comments tonight? Mary.
Okay, so I have three minutes, so I've summarized some things on here. Basically, what's happening here is that you're going to change the ordinance that set a specific day for fireworks, the Fourth of July, to a very broad, vague, unspecified day or days to be determined. The last time I was here on July the 2nd, Marshall brought up a question that I've thought about. He asked, "Why do we want the Fourth of July to be limited to one day when we celebrate other holidays over several days? Christmas. You can get up early and open your Christmas presents on New Year, Christmas Eve, Christmas Day, day after Christmas. You can celebrate the 12 days of Christmas with a partridge in a pear tree. The difference between that and the Fourth of July is that I can celebrate Christmas without disturbing my neighbors. You want for me to be able to have an extended period of time where I can do what would otherwise be illegal. I can cause noise in my neighborhood that keeps my neighbors up, or that keeps them up, that keeps them asleep and they don't want to be. I can terrorize their pets. And you want me to be able to do that over an extended period of time. And that's the difference between the Fourth of July and Christmas. Nobody is disturbing their neighbors. Nobody is disturbing the peace over Christmas, no matter how long you want to celebrate it. But on the Fourth of July, you let people do what every other day of the year they cannot do: disturb their neighbors, disturb their pets, leave trash in their yard, leave trash in the streets. And so I'm asking you to limit that ability to disturb our neighbors to one day a year. Thank you.
Counsel, any comments? Anybody else? Yes, ma'am. Sandy.
Been a long day. I agree with Mary Pat. Fourth of July is the Fourth of July. I enjoy some of the fireworks that some of them spend their money for, but it's one day. I don't like the noise. I don't like the disrespect for other people's property that I've seen. And I usually out on the fifth pretty easy looking at some yards and things, and there's trash everywhere. I just read on this paper that Mary handed out that it's not permissible to fire off fireworks in the streets. It's done all the time, but nothing is done about it. So I just, it's an ordinance. Brings me to another question: who enforces the ordinances? Can somebody answer that? I mean, isn't an ordinance a law, sort of? Who's the enforcer?
The police department.
When we moved here 39 years ago, it was the police. Just a question. I know there's a lot of things not enforced, and I would like to see them enforced. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Me.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm Becky Tanner. And for me, it becomes personal in many ways, because I feel Fourth of July, in many ways, has become a war song. And I say that because a year and a half ago, or a year ago, my neighbors were shooting off bottle rockets on my front yard, and the sparks were flying back onto my roof. Police officer came by, but did not stop. My neighbors called the police on that. But my point being, I don't believe that someone else's rights to shoot off fireworks should supersede my right to a peaceful evening. And that's it. Oh, one more thing. I'm so sorry. What I might suggest is that the city designated an area where people who want to shoot off fireworks could do so, and those that wanted to go watch them could do that too. And it could be a community celebration that I don't think would involve a lot of effort on the city's part. That's all.
Thank you very much.
I have one more question.
Yes.
Many years ago, football team or school could shoot off a cannon when a touchdown was made, and it was kind of ruled after that, and then disturbed people, and so the school could no longer do that. Why is it okay to shut off a cannon now? And there are cannon, there is a cannon that is shut off, and it shakes my windows even though they're new. Just a question.
The school still does currently shoot a cannon off.
Not recently.
Yes, they haven't scored. I spoke with the superintendent, and they still shoot one off at the football game.
Well, it doesn't shake the windows.
No, it does not.
Okay. Then maybe the other one should be quieted down a little bit? Let's think of some of your neighbors, is all I'm asking.
I'm assuming that's what it is. I don't know. I haven't seen it.
I don't think it's natural. I'm not the speaker, but I'm not certain, but I think I've asked.
Do they still shoot a cannon off of some sort?
Yeah, I believe there is a cannon that is shot off during football games when they score. I have no idea about this other candidate that I'm talking about, so.
Marshall knows about it.
I don't know anything about it. I don't own it. If that's what you're insinuating.
Well, it's down in your neighborhood.
But I don't own it, and I don't, I'm not over there.
After this last Fourth of July, even prior to it, I received a lot of citizens' comments regarding this, and I have to say that I'm in agreement, that I think it should be limited to just one day of the year, designated for that, and that's the Fourth of July, that's when we celebrate it. I know a lot of people disagree with me on that, but that's my feelings on it. Anybody else have anything else to say, citizens' comments? Okay, moving on.
Concerned agenda, approved minutes, regular council meeting, August 6th, 2019. Can I get a motion?
With the revised changes.
Oh, yes, with the revised changes pending.
I put President Bryan instead of President Sanders, and that is true.
So, a second. Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. Appropriation ordinance 8-20-19 in the amount of $67,605.61. Motion.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. One upstate.
I'm Mr. James Allen, Colonel Bryan.
Moving on. Department heads.
Unruh Brothers.
Unruh Brothers, excuse me.
I'm just here to answer questions. I've heard there's some questions arise about the roll-off south of town and who we use. So we're just here to answer whatever questions you guys may have for, you know, why we do that, what we do.
I kind of, I think you said, you kind of brought it up last meeting. We were just curious as to, you know, we do have a local guy that does have some roll-off dumpsters, and we wanted to talk to you guys about, you know, using local opposed to stones out of gray men. I know you guys have a pretty good working relationship. We don't want to ruin that for you guys. Kind of wanted some of your guys' input on it.
I don't, these guys are local.
Right, right.
I grew up here. I don't think we can afford being parochial and limiting just people who work here. And they do have the disposal agreement to do the waste disposal in this city, and I think we need to honor every agreement that we have, especially one with them. And there's no point in being parochial, because everybody in this county is together, and we're probably going to have people together with Stone outside this area. So I don't think keeping our parochial interests are necessary for the community investment interest.
I think you guys do a fabulous job picking up trash, you know, ruin that. But, you know, we would like to see the dumpster possibly stay local instead of using someone out of town, maybe it'll get dumped faster, maybe not. But there's obviously not, nothing we can do about it, you know, force you to do it, because you obviously have a contract, you know. Just something to keep in mind all these days, possibly.
Well, I can say that we don't have a contract with Nelson Stone, you know, Stone Waste per se. We do do a lot of work with him, and he's always right there at our back door waiting, you know, for the next dumpster to be picked up. A big part of why we use him is because he is large, which is not always a good thing, you know, continue feeding a large business, but he's got multiple trucks that will pick up that container. If one breaks down, we're not waiting for a mechanic shop for a week for parts. You know, that's a big thing. We've tried since we got this contract with you folks to be prudent, be on time. That was a large reason why you guys changed your service, you know, to us. So that's important to us. Stone's got nice equipment. Fisher's got nice equipment over here. Nothing wrong with that, but hydraulic hoses break, and until you've, I don't know who's all familiar with equipment, but until you try to find a fitting for some of these hydraulic systems, it can take a week sometimes to get the fittings, or get enough hose, you know, depending on his setup. There's, some of those are set up, there's a hose that runs the length of the frame. I'm not sure what his does, but that's a hard hose to replace on short notice, and to my knowledge, he's only got the one truck. So I know Stone takes a day or two. Jamie can vouch, the times it's been more than a day or two, it's been either weathered with the landfill closing, or not letting the big roll-offs in, because they can't get them around. Or two, we didn't maybe get the message it was full, and that's happened on a few occasions. But it's always been prudent, to my knowledge, other than just a handful of times. Fisher spoke with us on the phone after he got those and kind of asked if we'd use him. I told him, like I'm telling you guys, we don't make a dime with Stone. It's straight through, we do not mark up the invoice. It shows circulation for us financially, but we don't make a dime on it. So, you know, there's no personal gain or business gain for us there, financial gain, other than it's just, it's handy, it's convenient, because he's got the equipment to handle it. And sometimes there's days where you guys, I don't even know if you realize, but there, we'll pick up a container, and then literally two days later, it'll be full again. So it's not that it's not getting picked up quick, but it's getting refilled that quickly.
Jeff called it in Thursday, and it was picked up Friday.
Say, most of the time, they're within a day, you know. And like I said, we, when I spoke with Chad on the phone, I told him, you know, got no definite hold anybody. I don't have a problem using him. I do not have his legal, his insurance, you know, certificate of insurance, I don't have that on him. There is an agreement in Stafford County, I'm not sure you guys are aware of, but we had to go through the hoops and we got this contract. It's a Santa Fe Trail agreement, and any waste produced in Stafford County is supposed to go to the Reno County landfill, because they're part of that agreement. We are out of that agreement, because we are based in Barham County. I don't know if he is planning on taking stuff to Barham County or not, but that, under our franchise agreement, our contract, I feel it's my responsibility to make sure waste is disposed of where it's supposed to be. Just for legal purposes, and just for, there's no reason to step on toes. So I don't know if he's aware of that. Just a few things, guys. I don't know his rates at all. Stone's very reasonable. I know that Stone is one of the cheapest. So I don't know if you guys are concerned with that, if you're not concerned with it. Like I said, I, it's hard to use somebody if I don't know what they charge, when I'm, when I'm just the middleman. You know, and you guys see the bills, if they would go up 20, 50, $100, you know, per pole, you're not going to be impressed with me if that's, you're going to want to know why. Even if it is local, there's no sense in stepping over that much money. And that's, that's nothing but hearsay. I have no idea his rates, I don't have any kind of schedule from him, you know, promoting or letting me know of that. So that's the only reason, you know. I don't want to upset you guys, but that's kind of what the agreement was made for, so we had a little bit of, you know, backbone in the situation to, to make sure. I mean, all my answer for Stone.
That's fine, yeah.
And I don't know, you know. Sure.
Someone in town that we possibly like to give.
Sure. And if you guys know him, I don't know him, other than just a couple times talking to him, twice on the phone, once in person. You know, if you want to get, if he wants to give me his rates, his insurance, and let me know that he's, you know, if he's going to take it to Reno County, so he's within the limits of that agreement. I mean, we, I can't speak for him but myself, I don't have necessarily preference of that. But, you know, just know, if a truck goes down, it might sit for a week, and Stone's, if I boot him out, he's not going to come dump fish and roll-off on it. So, that's, that's kind of where we're at.
I think we made an agreement, I think it's your call, and I think we stick with the franchise agreement, don't try to undermine it any matter.
I agree with Jim completely. You guys are in charge, you're doing a great job, and I don't think it's our job to oversteer. That's just my opinion. Stay doing what you're doing.
I think I'm fine with you guys doing what you feel is right, what works for you guys, so.
Anybody who feels differently, let it know, you know, if we have rates, I know what we're getting into, I can kind of compare. I mean, I really am not against small town and local. I'm not at all, so, I mean, that's up to you guys, if you want to pass the word along.
I think that's why I looked, you're pretty local. When you grew up in the county, you grew up in the county. Can't get much more local.
I have to agree. I think that you're doing a really great job. One thing that keeps coming up, what I get a lot of people asking me about, and that's the recycling, and they're still, I'm curious if that is something that you're still considering.
There isn't, yes. We're finally getting this thing going.
I know that when you first taken the contract, you said it would be a little bit before you got, you wanted to get familiar with the city and everything, and I know that that was brought up then, and some people have asked quite a few times since then, but it's been the, my answer's been give them time.
Yeah.
So I'm glad to hear that, so.
And it's taken a long time, but we are finally, we, it's not official yet, but we do have a program in place that that should come sooner than later.
Okay, good. That's something I can pass on to people.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Any other questions?
We're upstate, move a second.
Yes, we do, yes.
Okay.
Because we do have the county.
I do tell people that, that we do have the county, but they're looking at curbside, so. Any other questions? Great. Thank you, gentlemen. We appreciate it. Thank you. All right. Thanks. Thank you. Moving on to department heads. Rent administrator, Lisa Cornwell. Heard anything from Burke?
Not since the sign won't be here back Thursday. School's starting.
Okay. Okay, moving on. Police chief, we have anything to report from the police?
Alan will be home Thursday. I told him to not come into work till Monday, I don't know how that works. I feel like he could use a couple days, but.
All right. Okay, fire chief, Michael.
I don't have anything.
All right. City clerk, Jamie.
I'm not certain if I need you guys for this, but our sun life, sun life financial, it's basically our life insurance policy for our fire department. Like, their proposal for continuing is up, so I don't know if I can do that, or if I need them to approve it, since it's a contract.
You're already talking about it, so why don't you just?
Well, I cannot, I didn't know if I could just say we're continuing it, or if I need the motions to do it.
Oh, until we get everything hammered out, then as soon as we get out of our way, we'll give you permission to sign.
Okay. So all of our fire department has $10,000 policies, I believe, that we pay for every month, and it's just continuing that. I think it's, we pay about, like, our last bill, a little over $100 for all of our fire departments. For life insurance? Yep.
Jamie, I'd make a suggestion, to the matter of discussing, if you're signing contracts, that you at least bring it to council, and let everybody know, and that way, there's never any misunderstanding. Not that we have to vote on or anything, but you just bring it, bring in agreements, signing to council. In that way, you know, as the administrator, senior administrator position, I think that keeps everybody in the loop. And I think you have every reason to do it, but I think your biggest, your big regret.
Yeah, I'd just like to, you know, take care of it, tell us.
Yeah, take care of it, tell us you did.
It is also that time of year for the league voting delegates. I need, I need one regular and one alternate, whoever would love to volunteer, or we can nominate.
You said we're not here. Shall we vote?
All we do is try to say.
Great name, Nick Jordan. But what's for?
The League of Kansas Municipalities is an organization that we're members with that helps us keep updated with what's going on in Topeka, and, like, I can go look up sample ordinances, reach out to different communities, they do, like, the wage studies. Basically, at their conference, they have a meeting that we never go to.
Best practices for running a city. I go to that meeting every six months, or city attorneys.
It's a very good resource for, for those interested with, I think, is the, is the league who came out with that, those 52, remember that paper that I sent out to you guys, that, like, the 52?
Oh, yeah. I remember that.
Well, the points of being a city or a council member?
It's an association of elected city officers. There's, it's further broken down, the City Attorney Association, City Clerk Association. I think there's UMA, there's Association.
It's a fantastic resource for us to have, and I think it's really important that we have someone there representing us, so.
What is it, what is it?
Well, the conference this year's in Kansas City, so, and it's in October, and I opted to not go, because it's in Kansas City in October. And I have, that is, maybe like, yeah.
24 hours. We just need to pick one, one primary and one alternate.
I think it's, it's got a board, I think it's a purpose of choosing board members and that kind of thing. I'm not quite sure, since I've been here, whether the electors have ever been.
I think that we have.
I think you fill out some paperwork sometimes, because I've been.
Yeah, I think they vote, like, sort of.
Same here.
Yeah, yeah. A lot of what we do.
One on the, Marshall, and, I'm saying, opinions. There's not a whole lot to it.
You guys ever consider going? There's hundreds of city council members at these meetings, I mean, it's, it's a good kind of place there. Matter of fact, when I get stuff through email, I sometimes forward it to Jamie, and her ideas on how to handle different situations and stuff from council.
Is that for which, you?
Marshall and Bryan. Have you?
I don't know, there's some thief, though.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Yes.
Okay, motion and a second. All in favor? Motion carries. One upstate. Anything else, Jamie?
I'm going on my last before baby vacation on the Fourth of September, and I'll be back after. Be my last five hurrah before baby gets here.
Before we move on, I didn't see Officer Perez over in the corner over there. I just wanted to let you know that I received a lot of positive feedback from the pool excursion going on over there, so kudos to you. Okay, moving on. City superintendent, Jeff.
Well, I think some of you heard that the overflow, we got the overflow on the water tower finally. We signed the contract this spring for it, and they finished it a week ago, week and a half ago. It's down to state specifications within three feet of the ground, it's got a screen on it, it's good to go, should be. So, started milling on West Street yesterday morning. It doesn't appear as though we're probably going to get as much done as we wanted to. We've had too many uh-ohs show up through the summer, water leaks, repairs, stuff like that. So we're just now getting started. Phil wants to seal the middle of next month, so we're going to get as much done as we can. If we can get to Fourth Street, that'd be great. Between Fourth and Fifth, we've got about 140 feet of curb that needs replaced. We want to eventually get clear up there to the concrete north of Seventh, but it doesn't look like it's going to be this year. We'll replace some dips, build some stuff down, but we're going to work at getting that done, so we can at least get some sealed down, so. Gosh, I don't know. About everything else is either on old business or new business, or throw it out the door, I guess, so. I think, oh, the only other thing is, Jamie didn't bring it up, we got turned down from Larry for fixing the air conditioner on the bus, see if I don't want to touch it again. The lines are in the floor, and they're extremely impossible to get to. I've been trying to contact a company that Mel Holly told me about, that does air condition for semis, vans, coaches, stuff like that, for aftermarket, that he said works really good. The farm that he worked for before he came to work for us, they put them in their semis, he said they're cold enough, you can scrape the ice off the windows. So the only drawback I see to it is we cannot put it on the back. They have different mounts, whether you put it on the floor, whether you put it on the ceiling, hang the compressor out the back, or how you do it, but with this bus, it has an emergency door on the back, so if we put it anywhere, it's about going to have to go on the roof. If we can, if it's something that we accomplish and go ahead and do, we're probably going to have to raise the header in the south door, because we've got a hang, an overhang, some of you seen it, over the back to get the ice and the water off of the roof in the wintertime, so we hate to raise that door anymore. We park it on the north end right now, but we might have to change the design of the opener to a side drive opener, get the rod and the cable off of the ceiling and that stuff, but let me find out what I can on the bus first, then we'll go from there. We don't really have any places we can park it, so. Anyway, I don't know what the cost is, but we've spent a couple thousand dollars this year on it already. So, you know, if we buy one for $2,000 probably next year, we'll save money. So let me see, let me see what I can do.
Who will put, who will put in on that?
I think we, there's a place in Park City that does it, but I can't seem to get ahold of the guy. I don't know whether he's got, he's pushed on hold, he doesn't want to answer the phone. Next closest place is Oklahoma City. But I want to call him and tell him what type of coach body he's on here, because I'm sure this isn't a personal they've done. See where we go from there. That's my guess, you know. Doesn't cost anything to call and ask, so maybe I'll have an answer for you next time. Last time, we did it in the shop, we put 10 cans free on it, so, I mean, it doesn't last very long, but we're going to try and get something repaired. Bus is old, it's a '97 model, but it's in good shape, there's no reason why it can't be kept for a long time. But the way they design them is kind of tough, because it's just like a Suburban or anything else, they got to get the lines back there somehow, you know? You start putting hose lines in there, you're looking for trouble. So anyway, let me see what I can do, and I will, and like Jamie, I will be gone next meeting. If I have an answer for you, I'll leave it with Jason, so that you'll have some kind of an idea, but I will be gone starting tomorrow. I've got some doctor stuff and spot ends, I will not be gone from town until next Friday. Next Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, I'll be in Kansas City, otherwise I'll be around taking care of stuff, so, you know, if you need me, don't hesitate to call. I think that's all I got for this, Dr. O, you've got some more on old business, we'll take care of that, so.
Jeff, I'll ask you this, since David's on vacation, but when we're, we have the county seal West Street, are there any other streets in town that would benefit from at least putting some ceiling on the top of it? I mean, I know it's not going to be long term, but, I mean, is that something you can talk to Phil about?
You know, we've got so many that are broke out, I don't know where to start. Ryan, I wished I did. I mean, I know that for a fact, you know, when we did First Street, when we got to Monroe, Monroe's horrible. I mean, First going north, drive down it, it's terrible. I don't know what to do. I mean, I could take, I could take that material out, we could roll it up, put it in a truck, shoot some oil on it, but you're going to waste it, I mean, you know, we're going to tear it back out.
Right.
We want to get back, that's the problem, we, you know, they've overlaid these over the years, and like down a block south of First Street, down where my mother lives, Fred Grunder, down in there on South Street, you know, they've brought the, they've brought the overlay up this high above the curb.
Right.
I mean, I just got so many blocks of it that I just try and hack, I wished we could, but I'm afraid we're going to drop thirty, forty thousand on something we're going to tear back up. You know, we bought five hundred and some odd ton, thirty ton or something from Phil for this year, about thirty thousand dollars worth. But Philip called me, he said, if you're not going to use it, we'll take it back, you know, it's no big deal. I don't think we're going to get to it, so if they want it back, we don't have to pay for it, we still got a couple hundred done, we're going to try and use. But, you know, we've had enough water leaks and valve changes and that stuff all summer that it's kind of limited when we could start milling, so we're just now really getting started, and I mean, at four feet, it takes a long time to cut it out, but.
I think what we're doing is working, you know, on First Street, and I think it has helped a lot, but I just, I just see it taking a long time, you know, and.
It does take a long time, I mean, you know.
I just wondered if there was something.
The machine is small, there's all, yeah, unless we want to go outside to have somebody come in and mill it, I don't even, I don't even know what the cost would be, I would hate to even guess. If we could get somebody to mill it, we could take it off and lay it back, you know? I might call Venture and see, you know, what it would cost for a day or two days. I don't know how many feet they could do a day, but, and I'm with you. I mean, if we could peel it out ten times faster.
It just seems like it's going to take fifteen years.
Well, it is, that's the thing, for as much, for as much has been destroyed in the past and overlaid that way, it's going to take fifteen years to get back.
Jeff, does Stafford have a machine?
Yes, they do.
We might be able to add, because I don't, they don't, when I talk to Jamie, they don't do their own surgeries.
I had talked to them once before, but they don't use it, but it's a, it's an option that we could use. It fits into loader bucket, it's quite a bit larger than what we've got, and it runs off a John Deere diesel motor, and it mills. Yeah, I'll be glad to talk to them and see if, you know, Sean and I talked about that before we bought the machine we have, and, and if we could make a deal with Jamie or something, to, you know, get them over here for a week or something. If they're not going to use it, we sure will. I mean, we put about two sets of teeth a year on this one, no more than we do, they're about seven hundred dollars a set. You know, we get our money's worth out of it, but it's slow, it is slow, because it takes three passes to really get ten foot line, and we'd like to take ten feet when we do it, so we get that outside track of those wheels, you know? Also, we want to start using chat when we do, chat's more expensive, but the survival rate on it's about five times higher than what sand is. When we do that, Philip suggests we use a polymer type oil, it's more flexible in the winter time. We just didn't get a very good bite on it for this year. We're, you know, I would like to go ahead and seal that one down on First Street again, with gravel. I really think we got a good enough scald on it that if we gravel seal it, now it'll last for a long time, so.
Any idea what it costs just to have the county seal it, sand it, top it?
I think last year, the sand, the seal was about five thousand, you know, they treat us pretty well.
Right.
We pay for some fuel and a little bit of labor and stuff compared to, you know, if we'd had somebody outside do it, it'd been fifty or sixty thousand, so. And he, and I talked to him about using chat, because we used to use chat all the time. They used to complain that it was hard on the gates, on the spreader, but Phil told me he didn't have a problem using it, and I would prefer to use it. I sat down, Jason, I sat down, it's been quite some time ago now to figure out what it would take to seal what we had laid out for this year, and they bring the chat in up at the KTS, the same place we got the rock, so, you know, we can haul it right down here and end up it in a pile, use it from there, so. But the milling part of it is the slow part, it, I mean, it takes a long time, it really does. You could spend a week and get two blocks maybe, if you're lucky, so, if there was another way to do it with a bigger piece of equipment, boy, I'm all game, I really am. I mean, we could spend a week hauling it off if they spent two days peeling it up, I don't have a problem with that. So, in the long run, cost-wise, it might be cheaper.
You might contact Venture, they're, they're rolling down, driving down Fifty Highway right now.
Drive by today, and they're taking twelve inches off.
Oh, yeah, that's an eating machine, I've watched that thing two, three times, it's lethal. So, I'll go haul it out, see what we can do. Doesn't cost much to ask, I mean, you know.
I don't know, I just see it taking us a long.
It's a long time.
Takes up a lot of time.
It does, it really does.
I think it's working just fine.
Yeah, it is, it works fine, it's just, you know, that machine was designed for, you know, water patch areas, stuff like that, I mean, you use it day in and day out, it's, and we do it when we bought it, I mean, you know, we were hoping, and we've gotten a lot of feet out of it, we really have so far, and we'll continue to do it, but it's just very time consuming, for no, no more than we get, so. Let me just call and ask it.
Because they have a contractor, a company that.
They just overweigh theirs?
A company comes in and does it?
Stafford? Yeah, they use what we used to use, it's a, it's a concrete, a cement, and, uh, oil mix, and it's really just pretty. I mean, unless your streets are shaped, I mean, we could do something like that, but you could drop fifty, sixty thousand pretty fast.
But the cracks, the way our streets are all cracked up, I would question if you have any bit longer benefit by overlaying.
Well, unless you get it really clean, you know, you, asphalt just doesn't stick if you don't get it really clean.
Well, you have another winter that freezes and pauses many times.
Sure, just picks it up, yeah.
Last year, it just breaks it up faster than you could change it.
Sure, and some of these, I'm not too sure, wouldn't it be better to take a grader and ripper after them? I mean, they're just that bad, you know? So, and, and maybe that's an option we ought to look at, so.
Just grate them out, rip them out?
Just, we got scare fire, I mean, we can set that scare fire down, we can peel them out, lay a block asphalt at a time with a blade, I mean, I got a pretty good blade on three or seven right there.
The only thing you do when you do that, you just don't get your milling.
You don't get your material.
You don't get your milling, that's the only thing.
Yeah, it's just junk when you get done.
Right.
I mean, it's fit for dirt roads if you want to spread it out there and work it down, but it's not fit for anything else, so. But there, that's your way to do it, I mean, you can take a lot of material out in a short amount of time, so, and maybe that's what we ought to look at on some of these streets. I think we'd be money ahead. They don't grind very well either, you know, when you get chunks like this that are yay thick, they don't grind very well, they don't, so. I wish David was here, but I, I think that probably in some cases, that's probably the answer, is not to pussyfoot around with taking out ten feet, is to take it out and lay it back, you know, tack it and lay it back, so, start over. Basically, is what you do, start over, so, anyway. I think it's an option to look at, I really do, I really do. And time-wise, it sure is, so. Let me do some calling on that, see what I can come up with, you know? Maybe it's time to change the game, I mean, you know, it's like you said, it's going to take fifteen, I told the guys, I said, you'll never get it done in my lifetime, you know, and they'll be, they'll be old men when they get done at the rate we're going. There's a lot of miles to straight, you know, so, and a lot of it's been poorly maintained, so, anyway.
Can you go back with, like, gravel road in some places?
You can oil it and lay it down, start over, I mean.
Or just, just go to gravel, just.
I don't think you want to do that, you know, where you've got asphalt here in town on the edges, yeah, maybe, but, you know, I've got so many things that are, are down in the bottom end that need repair, and it's just going to be a flip of the coin to see where you want to start, so. And I showed you some up the other day, and we've got some sewer problems and some stuff that we want to address, we want to look into this fall, so, we'll get this stuff done out of our hair, and we'll start working on that, so, anyway, I think the rest of the stuff I got's on the, on the bottom list, your old business, so.
Any other questions for Jeff? Jeff, wanted to bring a, a concern that I got from a couple people on First Street, the sidewalk right there in front of Edith Sanders' home, it's sinking about an inch. I don't know if there's anything that can be done about that, but she's really concerned about.
It'll be taken out and repaired, it wasn't compacted good, would be my guess.
I think it's where they took that tree out.
Yeah.
I mean, if nothing else, it might be jackhammered out and bored.
Well, when you get a chance, if you can take a look at it, please. All right, great, thank you.
Is that, is that city sidewalk, or is it? Well, it's, it's.
The city has to maintain it, fix it, and repair it if it's broke. That was in the contract that the city council signed when they put that sidewalk in. It is our responsibility. That was all part of the grant, it was right in there, black and white, it is the city's responsibility to maintain that sidewalk.
I'll take a look at it.
All right, moving on. Old utility supervisor, Jason?
Maybe I'll better count the council.
Nothing? Okay, and David didn't leave anything with you?
He left me some stuff, but it's, most of it's down the way here.
Okay, very good. All right, move on to City Attorney, John, you have a four oh six East First?
Your health officer placard a house last Thursday or Friday after going through it as a stipulation in a municipal court case. She determined that it was probably a danger to health and the wellbeing of the neighborhood. She is preparing a report, I received it just before five o'clock this evening, and submitted my comments to her. Her and Jamie are going to start the informal process to work with the landowner, but I am not hopeful that anything is going to result, and anticipate bringing it back to the council to initiate the formal process, requesting that it be repaired or removed. It's my understanding that we have dealt with this individual before, many years ago, and we just didn't take the next step, but it's probably been, the house has probably been used by a herd of dogs over the course of the years, and I'm not too hopeful that anything can be salvaged from the house at this point, so, it may be that the city would have to abate that property, I don't know whether it has based it. I kind of looked at title at this point, I think we're only dealing with one homeowner, but it's an issue that we have on our horizon.
Is there an issue with, go ahead, start the abatement process on the dog?
We, we have, she, she's working on the report, and then they're required to go through an informal process. I was a little unclear as to whether it was done, but I don't think pictures were taken of it, so.
I don't think she.
She needs to go back and take pictures. So, we have kind of a, a benchmark as to the condition of the house, and the council would, would give this individual usually thirty days to, to clean it up, but he has tended to be unresponsive to municipal court stuff. He's probably going to file and follow that kind of same path here, which we're then the council kind of the decision to make as far as what to do with that.
I have a question, would that mean Black has the dog still live there?
They, it's my understanding she's, she, and she's kind of got the authority on it, the health officer, she's told us, but then, I think that nobody's supposed to be there.
The dogs are not supposed to be there.
Nobody's supposed to be there, then, then nobody's there to take care of the dogs.
I think that he told her that there would be a dog outside, and then the two other dogs are with him all the time. There's supposed to be one tethered up out back, so. That is, that is what he reported to her that day, but no dogs are supposed to be in the house, nor people unless he is cleaning it.
Did this start because somebody was complaining they could smell the house from the neighborhood?
And there's no electrical anywhere.
There's, there's two parallel paths to this, which is the municipal court and the other stuff, and, and, so, I'm just going to run them both at the same time, because if, if one doesn't work, then the other day.
Okay, anything else, John?
That's all I've got for news stuff.
Any other questions for John?
Other than the fireworks, I'm going to answer, Jason, they're all business.
Marshall, what do you have to thought?
Okay, we're about the old business, West Street.
I assume we're talking about the repair, where we're headed now, I guess, I don't really know.
Like it's southwest.
Oh.
The ditch and stuff like that.
They've been maintaining it and grading it as it needed to be, yeah.
No questions on that, we'll move on to Fountain.
I think we're in the final stages of getting ready to pour the ball. Looks like, I didn't walk over there this afternoon, but it looks like most of it's formed up, so I'd say we're fairly partial to pour the bases in, the bottoms in, and so, the next couple of days, we ought to see some cement out of there.
This work looks nice, he's got quite a ways to go to get the curve made around.
So, anyway, that's where we're at there, I guess.
All right, Truck Parking.
I took it all myself a couple of weeks ago to have the east boundary line of the city's property out behind the water plant survey, where we know where the, the far east mark is, so that if the council chose to do anything out in that neck of the woods, I have boundaries already. Jason and I've talked about a way to get electricity up there, bury electricity up there, and a pad mount transformers, and we'd have lighting and whatever else, you know? We've got the room to get in between the edge of where our fence for our salt ponds are out behind and that stuff, to be able to trench something in up there, so the rest of it's up to you guys.
Could you give us maybe a cost of what running the electricity and, and stuff like that's going to cost us, cost the city for that, yeah?
Transformers, eight hundred bucks, and the wire's about four dollars a foot, so we're going to do a measurement, I'll have a good rough figure by the time we get back, you know, if you want to set poles there, put lighting, whatever you want to do, I mean, we could go from there, but we felt like that if we could cut through on the east side of the water plant, it would be about a third of the distance it would be to come around the north side, so, I talked to Randy Anderson, the guy that does the surveying, and I asked him what it cost, and he said somewhere less than a thousand dollars, I told him to get it done. So, it's flagged, we'll set some type of permanent post out there so that we know from now on where the property stops. We're going to take some trees out east of the water plant this fall, we get slowed down a little bit, so we have, it has some funny jugs in it, but we can still get back there, so, we'll get some measurements, I don't know whether I'll get it before next meeting, but I'll get you some measurements, you know, we can put a cost together on what you want to do there. I thought, you know, that if we start milling, that's where we'd haul the millings. I mean, I, I, instead of selling them for ten or fifteen bucks a ton, haul them out there, if we get her a foot deep, get her a foot deep, you know? So, between rocking millings, we could put a pretty good base out there.
Well, I guess we need to check on current tenant out there.
Yeah, I, and we talked about that this afternoon, and I don't think anybody that's in the office knows when that deal was cut, so.
Yeah.
I might ask Raymond, I think Raymond does it, doesn't he?
I think he knows, yeah.
Yeah, ask him and see. We'll find something in here, but it's not been touched for a long time, so, anyway. So, that's, that's the answer on that deal, I guess.
Okay, anything else on truck parking? Moving on, street signs.
David says, waiting on the company with the street signs to send me a corrected approval letter, so they can ship to us, so.
It was suggested that the exit out of the parking lot across from the library.
Yes.
There's been a few people that have tried, started to turn to the right. Can we get a left turn only painted onto the street right there? I know it's kind of redundant, but.
Are we talking about?
Talk about here on Monroe.
At Fifth and Monroe coming around the corner?
Yeah, you know where the buses park?
You mean people trying to flip a U?
No, people would park in that area prior to them.
Oh, that's a school side, that's not ours.
No, but I'm talking about on the street, can we get a left turn only, something painted on there?
On the street?
Oh, when they come out of where the buses park, instead of people trying to turn right.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Right.
Going up the downstairs.
Get a sign.
I can get, I can get a stencil.
Okay.
Yeah.
If that could be done, that's on point.
I'll get one order.
Sign or something.
I mean, Shirley, Shirley. I mean, Shirley, Shirley will learn to...
Is that a cure for stupid?
I would say that would be a real good deal, yeah.
You would think that, but it doesn't happen.
Well, it's only been a week.
I mean, they're turning, you know, they're turning against the traffic.
People were still running the stop signs a year after they've been put up over here, and even after several months of Sonny putting balloons on the stop signs, people were still running the stop signs over here.
I would think that that would be a law enforcement deal there. If they're doing that, I think they ought to be thinking of it.
If you're turning against a one-way street, that's a ticket. I don't know how they're getting in there, but, I mean, they'd have to be coming through the alley, pull them into that bus parking through the alley.
They ain't going to do it right now because it's all tore up with an excavator and a bucket and everything else.
Because that's going to be a one-way through, right?
Right, right.
So, you want us to...
Yeah, it's already one-way. They're just going up the downstairs.
Yeah. I mean, I sure get you on. I'll look and see what I can do.
All right, that'd be fine.
I don't know how big we can paint stupid. We'll try something, you know?
Okay.
I don't know.
All right, water rights.
Okay, that deal that Jason brought up the last time, we spent quite a little bit of time with the people over at the state water office. When we pulled the rights on that number two well down there that we load trucks out of, we sent those rights to number seven and eight, which are the two shallow wells that sit behind the water plant. The state allows us a million gallons to pump out of there for fire safety, but we have two problems. One is it's tied into the system. We can't pump it directly out into a truck. It's not designed that way. That water well has some severe piping problems that need to be done. And so, we talked about the fact that the last couple of years since Jason and I have been tracking this, that we've either sold or given away about two and a half million gallons a year in water out of there. And so, what we would like to do is to turn that into a non-potable well, where we could... the nitrates are very high in that well, but the state has allowed us to be able to pump them out as long as we use it for no consumption. It would have to be non-drinkable water. And so, she told us that we had enough senior rights, more than enough senior rights off of the number five well, which is on the east side of town, to pull about fifteen acre feet out of there and move it to that south well. And then, it would be completely cut off from city water piping, which now we're selling them treated water when we load those trucks out, and we figure that we're doing about five or six re-gens a year off of that, amounts to a load, or a load and a half of salt. Salt's about five thousand dollars a load now. So, but we had to... part of the deal was, and I don't know how much of those drawings you got, we have to locate people within a thousand feet and tell them that this is what we're going to do. But it takes about six months to send this back to the state to get it done. But eventually, we would like to automate that so we can track our water. And I talked to Ryan about this in the spring a little bit. We really haven't talked about it much since then. And Marshall, I've talked to Marshall Trump too, that there's a company that has designed an outlet that we could pipe out of the wall. The fire trucks could use it, water trucks, anybody, you know, cattle tanks, whatever the case may be. And it would meter every gallon that come out of there so that we could track that water and stay under what the state permit is. But that's basically all it is. It's not a sleight-of-hand deal by any means. We just want to get some of the money back out of what we're giving away on treated water. And so, we'd like to do that and start the process. I think it's a couple hundred bucks to send it in. The mayor signs it when we get it done. We send it into the state. And like the gal at Stafford told us, she said, "They send it up, they send it back, say no, they send it up again, they send it back. Yeah, it works." It's kind of a game they play. She said it'd take about six months to do it. But that's really, I guess, where we're headed, is we'd like to get some use out of that and maybe in the process, pull some nitrates off the top of the wall. So, that's really, that's basically all it is.
Do we lose any allocation on the transfer you get?
We're just going to pull fifteen acre feet off that east one.
There's no penalty to do this to you at all?
No, none at all. And if we want to kick them back out there later sometime, we can do that too. But we've got about, I don't know how many acre feet it'd be, we've got about forty-two or forty-three million gallons that were allocated for that. We'll only pump about forty-six to forty-eight the whole year out of five wells. So, she said fifteen acre feet, five million gallons, plus the million we get for fire safety would be more than enough to sell out there. You know, you guys come in with one tank of water for cattle or whatever the case may be. So, that's basically what it is, water trucks. You know, we've sold a lot of water. I mean, we've been selling out this hydrant over here left and right for that deal down here on the corner. They've taken a couple hundred thousand gallons from us or a little bit or so. But eventually, you know, we get this done. We would like to automate it, and it's about ten or twelve thousand dollars to do that, put a pump in it so that it's not tied to the city water in any way, shape, or form, and make it self-serve. We track everything that the fire department uses. We track everything we sold, and it would be billed to the customers if they take it out down to the gallon. So, that's really all it is. Anyway.
I think we need to go ahead and proceed forward. Let's get the permit and start to fly the roof.
Any other questions, comments?
Consensus, okay.
Okay, Jamie, carpet and skating rink.
Uh-huh. The numbers are on your sheet.
This is just for...
Just for the front.
In the front. No office space, no...
The rec.
It is for the rec office and then up front with the skating.
Yep.
Didn't touch the walls, really. I just think we need to handle... Now, is this all from one person or these three different...
There are two different companies, three different carpeters.
I'm assuming option one and option three are from the same company?
One or two are from the same company. I can give you cubic feet.
Sandy, is that about fifteen pacer?
Four.
Twelve?
I hate to eat away from this, but we got to know what...
They, like, the estimates, the numbers that I saw were in cubic feet.
Can't be cubic feet. Well, I'm just talking about carpeting, the countertop and everything. I went in there today, and in the skating rink, it's carpet about five foot tall, stuck glued right on the sheet rock. You know, and I don't know how you replace that. If you tear it off, the sheet rock comes with it.
She's going to come right with it.
So, but...
So, my intention when I started this project was to get the carpet done and then have, like, have, if the guys had time this winter, or hire someone to rebuild that area. It doesn't need carpeting. I mean, I don't feel like it's going to make or break if it's carpeted, but it's ratty, like, the drawers don't open. I just feel like if we... that was my intention.
I built it thirty years.
Yeah, I mean, I... I mean, we've definitely got the use out of it, but that was my intention, and that's why I didn't include that, especially when Lowe's said it was going to be a couple thousand dollars just for that, like, no thank you.
Is anybody willing to touch the carpet on the walls around the skating rink?
No, I'm sure they would be. It's money in their pocket. I don't feel comfortable...
I mean, I just hate to update this part of it and never touch the outside part that's been there thirty-six, thirty-seven years.
To get to that northeast corner, we need to repair that opening around that door and stuff though too, because it's all been falling out of that corner. I mean, there's quite a bit of work on that east wall.
I had a lady come today, because we usually get the carpets cleaned before the season, and we're switching companies because we didn't have very good luck with the last company. So, I got my first estimate today, and she was very helpful over there. She talked like they could work on the carpet, on the walls, and she was very confident that when her guys started the work, if it looked like it was going to damage or not work, they would stop and call her, and she would call and say, "Hey, this isn't a good idea."
So, we got one a month before skating starts? We can't really afford it. If we're going to do something, we either do it now or we wait until after skating, so...
I mean, if we wait, maybe having the guys do the repairs over there, you know, maybe we shouldn't jump in and do it all. Maybe we should look and see what really needs done before we... I have a bad feeling about ripping that carpet off the walls. I'm not a contractor, but, I mean, it just... It scares me. I don't want to have another situation where we're trying to repair something and it become a disaster.
Jeff, most of the damage, like, in northeast corner, is that from when the roof used to leak?
Yes.
Before they got the new rip on?
Yeah, see, and if you look from the outside, that opening is pretty large where it framed in. And that water went down that wall. I mean, if you walk over and push on it real hard, you'll lose the whole works. I mean, it's going to take some severe work.
And Steve said today he doesn't think it's leaking anymore.
No, no, it's not leaking anymore. It's going to have to be gutted out and completely redone.
Sounds like it's not supporting well, you know, I mean, it's...
Holding that door is the only thing that really affects it, yeah.
I need to go look. I don't know what I'm talking about.
We could always adjourn and go walk over there and look at it. Recess. Recess.
Is that, is that door a necessity to have in the northeast corner?
It's a fire exit door. Oh, that's what it is, yeah. I mean, they take trash out there, but it's really a fire exit door is what it is.
And that's the...
Turn on the thing, suck a little hot air through there.
Having both of those doors open so that they handle this, kind of the only circulation. We could recess and go check it out.
That was my suggestion.
Hey, I'm tired of talking about it. You're going to get it figured out. I don't want, you know, need to look at it. Everybody needs to see my cover. Council want to recess?
You recess and reconvene in a certain period of time over there, so you're still meeting just over there.
So, would we just leave here, walk over there, recess?
Yeah, you just say, "Well, recess and reconvene at eight oh five or eight ten at the Witz Center." That's how you do it, just like when we moved to the library.
To recess this meeting here, meet over at the Witz Center and resume at eight oh five. Okay, reconvene this meeting, see council? All right. Any discussion, council?
I guess we talked to everybody. We'd like to get a bid on replacing the carpet, fixing the northeast door or the structure and water damage.
Right. Yeah, it's pretty bad over that neck of the woods. Jamie, if you could go ahead and try and get some...
So, I can hire a contractor to do all of this?
To fix the door and the northeast corner.
And figure out what carpet will be good to replace? Or you want me to just get a carpet quote because we want it changed? Or should we get the opinion of a contractor, maybe?
I think if you're going to do all the work on the northeast corner, you're not going to match the carpet that you're pulling off. You're probably not going to get it to restick when you do that. I just don't think you will.
There's not that many square feet on those walls. I don't think...
You're going to take the paper off the carpet when you do it. It's glued on there.
But also, don't you think we can re-glue it back though, even if the paper comes off?
Oh, I would hope so. I mean, it's a right...
I mean, it doesn't have to be perfect. We're going to cover it up anyway.
No, and it won't have to be smooth as long as it'll stick.
Yeah.
There ought to be something to make it stick, I would think.
Boy...
Does it need to have carpet on it again?
Well, I assume it does it for its safety and then noise canceling.
And then the noise canceling.
The noise is huge, I would think. Not that, I mean, I don't do a lot of work, but isn't some of that stuff going to be broken from hitting it? Aren't you going to start pulling off chunks of drywall too? I imagine some, right?
There's a couple spots.
I mean, there might be some.
Yeah, but it's drywall. It's a natural material to take. I mean, that stuff's cheap.
You might go over the top of it with some quarter and three eights.
There you go.
Just cover it up.
Yeah, you know, it might be faster and cheaper. You might be getting it off of it.
You don't have to cover it.
Don't have to be smooth.
It's thirty-year or forty-year facelift, and I just think we want to do it right. When we redid our office and we removed the paneling, we just cut the drywall right above the paneling and just took it all out. Yeah. Re-drywalled it. Yeah, that is, you can cut it right below the trim. You can panel it back up. That's a darn good point. Takes a lot of the more, takes off with it. Who even cares? But that's not, question for me, us. That's the carpet guy and the contractor guy to talk about. I don't make that northeast corner is that big a deal. I think if one day with a good crew, you can...
You could have them all fixed.
If they're tearing it out, they'll be fixing it.
Oh, yeah, I follow.
Okay, so council, if I'm hearing correctly, you want to direct Jamie to go ahead and start looking for a contractor? You want her to bring it to council? You just go ahead and start doing the hiring?
I'll bring it to you guys.
Okay, you should do that.
Yeah, I'll just try to have it a little bit itemized. I don't...
Right, right. You can get a hold of maybe Ben Long to...
And you want me to direct them to give you the square feet?
We just want a carpet bed that has more than the material, than the labor, and the total. We'd like to grow capital for it.
I can send you the seven or eight pictures that he sent from his computer from Lowe's that are in, I think it's cubic square, or cubic feet.
The measurements that they measured.
But they don't give it in square feet.
Then convert it, figure that real quick anyway.
All right, all the carpet in there, and then keep the carpet guy and get with the concrete.
We can talk to the contractor who want to build a new desk rather than a... Countertops, rather than carpet that, we can get a price and see. It's not hard.
The countertop's basically just a place to store all the skates and everything. And they set them up on top and, you know, spill drinks and...
Do you want to look into fixing the northwest corner as well?
It's not as bad as the northeast, but it's not...
If we're going to fix it and put new carpet on the walls, we're going to fix everything.
Because I believe air comes through that corner, correct?
Yeah, that corner settles what it is, but I think it could be compacted out.
I mean, if we need to...
You're not going to relay the lock on it this term. I don't think you want carpet at that desk in front, because drinks and everything gets built up to a non-porous surface up there, whether it's Formica or something like that. You get Formica top for nothing. Just get the measurements and, you know, let your fiscus or anybody go order you Formica top, but all you do is set it on there and get rid of the damn part, and it's non-porous and much more.
Yeah, no kidding, right?
Just some ideas.
Do we also know exactly how much money we have available off of that that we can spend?
Off of the...
The Witz fund.
The last time we looked into it, I think it was fourteen...
I can tell you.
Thirteen something, thirteen million or something like that.
Remember the last time we talked about them?
It's been a couple months, but there is...
And also Rex said they were built.
I mean, I'm just thinking that without splitting and depleting it, we need to spend as much as we can to fix as much right now while we're doing it.
You want the carpet on the baseboards, look at as well? And not...
I think that sells.
The cabinet or the cabinet?
See, cabinet, I put Formica or some non-porous surface. You don't want carpet.
You need something harder than that though, because it'll wear the finish off of that Formica.
The only thing you might think about...
I don't know if you've noticed, but it's malice.
The only thing you might think about is out on the ring side of it, of doing something different on that side. So that, you know, kid did fall headfirst... So that, you know, kid did fall in, fall headfirst into a wood.
Yeah, Formica or tile or anything.
You know, just something a little softer in the skating rink side of that area.
Contractor has some ideas?
Yeah.
I think it might just be fair enough to contract for the, like, inside contract to carpeting it, thanks.
That's exactly what I'm gonna do. I've spent enough time on this.
It'd likely be easier just to do it that way.
Four times.
It's the exact same thing you gave us last time, not to make a mistake.
No, because she took my numbers out of here. I had them, but Pam must've taken them out to update them.
Because I didn't say.
But I think, I, I think, I think they're right. I think it's about thirteen nine. I'm gonna stay real close.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
And it actually is not the same exact thing that you got if you looked at the number.
Well, there's a cash balance of sixty-four, plus fourteen ninety-one, and a little bit more. So, we have all the fifty thousand, so that's a fourteen, five, fourteen ninety-one.
That's, yeah, that's probably close.
Okay. Start working on that, Jamie. Get back to counsel.
I wrote it, yeah.
Okay, there's no more questions on that. Moving on to WSU strategic plan.
I reached out, and she is getting ahold of their strategic plan coordinator. And she actually emailed me earlier this afternoon, so I'll be getting ahold of her and getting that set up. I did find another option on our listserv that we have. There is a city that was doing some research about starting a strategic plan in their community. And one of the answers that they got back, though the community had sent, they sat down and do a yearly strategic plan. And I almost thought that that would be beneficial for us because of the turnover every couple of years. And it would give them light on, you know, not set a five, ten, fifteen-year strategic plan. And then you have turnover either in the office, in the shop, on council. So, that could be an option too. But we'll see what the USU says with the prices and what our options are.
Any questions? Moving on. Fireworks ordinance.
Started the process early. There's, I've got no dog in this fight. I will say that the reference to number four on the handout we received earlier in the meeting, that we both wanted to specify, uh, safety requirements, the ordinance does reference, uh, applicable state and federal laws and regulations. And I, I probably should have provided that to counsel, but does think it would be included in those. State code, laws and regulations. I wasn't in intention to allow Lowe's and South fireworks to go away without having fireworks extinguishers. It is also mirrored off of, I think I can use Bridgetown, ordinance excluded, a lot of the language that they handle. Would be unnecessary here. But as far as recommendation as to what council should do, as far as the dates and times, I don't have.
That's your ordinance number?
Ten sixty-four nineteen.
Sixty-four, I see. Sixty-four, that was better.
I guess I operate through this. This is a problem of the, you know. I think just have it one day, you know, maybe not quite, but I'm not saying for four days, in two days. Might be a good group.
Well, I just can say we have to approve it the way we're doing it. I mean, I want it just one day when we're going on it anyway, but the way the council's setting the dates, we obviously need to make the change. I want to have this choice in that matter. I agree, it should only be one day, but I didn't win that matter.
As it's been stated, we could always vote on it, and next time when it comes down to have it just one day.
This is, this is just, just allowing us to set those dates.
Right, right.
Do we need to add the stuff in there, John, about state regulations? Because I know they're all inspected every year by the fire department.
You know, I, I probably should sit up when we, when Scott and I did a contract for his stand here, he was required to file follows state and applicable laws and regulations. Now, look at this. I don't think that's in the sale of fireworks section four. I mean, like I said, it, we kinda got started early on this. I can bring back those lists, what all of that they would be required to fall under.
Well, I think it's on the permit, is it not? I mean, the state sends out an inspection list, the fire department inspects every, every state.
That, that I, that I don't know.
That's all taken care of through the state.
Yeah, through the firework.
I mean, so that would cover all that. I mean, as far as, I mean, the state, I think, allows the seventh, the twenty-seventh through the fifth of sale of fireworks.
That's correct.
Just what the state set forward. At one point in time, I don't know why the city had the twenty-ninth through the fourth, but.
I think you should follow state regs.
Yeah, I mean, as far as the sale of them, yeah. I mean, I'm not, I'm not opposed to following the state regulations on them. Allowing them to sell from the twenty-seventh to the fifth.
The other thing that's nodding here that was in the previous ordinance related to, this was brought up, the firing of fireworks on the city's street. And I think what was brought up at the, at one of the previous meetings was firing fireworks on the trees. It's probably better to shoot them off in the street than under a tree.
You know, there is some safety issues, I think, with, if, if you live in a house that has two big trees in your front yard, where do you do it?
Seven, seven streets, safest place in the world.
I mean, it would be safer to do it in the street rather than in your front yard and catch your trees on fire or your house or something.
Streets are gonna burn.
Biggest concern is just cleaning up your trash, which is.
That's the biggest problem.
You know, the kids pretty much just cleaned it up as well as I ever seen this year, when it's cleaned up.
I mean, I, Jeff, you guys are around the streets. What, do you know what they look like afterwards?
They don't look as bad as they used to. You know, people are pretty good about policing themselves anymore. I mean, there were some years where we took street sweeper out because it was a mess, but I think they kinda started enforcing that. And I think, you know, we never had to police it very much, but I think they're a whole lot better now about cleaning them up than they used to.
Fewer kids in town.
We could add a subsection related to disposal of trash, cleanup litter. I mean, it's not in there. It's kinda, we've got other ordinances that cover that, but if it could be added, it would fall into that penalty section, which is a pretty hefty penalty section.
I think that we, I think we need to add that into it, just to make sure that we're covering all of our bases on it.
I can't propose language off the top of my head, but it could be done, next council.
Since we've got started early on this, we don't really need to take a vote on this right now. Can we just go ahead and make, have you, direct you to make all the amendments that we need?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. Counsel, how does counsel feel with that?
We just get it out of the way of John's amendments, approve it with.
With everything that, with that's the way I'm thinking, so.
And then the council vote annually as to when they're ready to allow fireworks.
That would still remain the same.
I'd really hate to try to overregulate something that you really can't regulate, because kids are gonna shoot fireworks when they have them. And there's a lot worse things that could get, uh, comments should be related only to council and not from the peanut gallery. So, if you overregulate, write more regulations which that you can enforce or want to enforce, I think it's somewhat absurd. And if we've got cleanup ordinances in town, you know, let's don't make it so restrictive that it's not practical. So, I mean, maybe I'm, maybe I'm not man out, but I've had enough, raised enough kids and had enough teenagers around. I know what they're gonna do. You guys can get that experience coming up.
Okay, any more discussion on this? March.
I would, I would just move to approve ordinance number ten sixty-four dash nineteen with the amendment, John.
But your first motion dies for a lack of second.
And I don't actually, I'm not actually recommending an amendment. I, I don't know what the amendment would look like until I've got the language.
I think we accept it as it's written.
It's either that or you send me back to the drawing board to include that language. If I, if I, if I had the language to you, I could say this is what it's called.
I just hate that you keep bragging along, you know?
I mean, we accept it as written.
Is that a motion?
It's motion. I mean, we accept it, the ordinance is written.
Motion on the table, we have a second.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Carries. Moving on. Rec meters at Ball Field.
They're in.
They're in, okay.
Am I allowed to take this one off?
Yep.
Perfect.
Okay.
We're gonna change the water meter to electronic as soon as it comes in, but the meters are in.
Okay, moving on to new business, demolition permit.
I had Jamie put this on there. We have had a couple people that bought houses off of the tax rule. The city does require that they buy a demolition permit to tear their, tear property down in town. And I think that's how the county waived dumping fees. I think the city should waive the demolition fee and permit to those people. I mean, I think it's only right, they're cleaning up a property. I think we oughta give them a little break here and let them not have to pay that.
The permit fee is ten dollars if it's connected, or if it's not connected, it's twenty dollars if it's.
But I think, and I think the city, I think we also need to, as far as like Jeff and them, any power lines that run to them properties, if we need to mark the water lines, sewer lines, we need to do that stuff for them. They're doing the community a big favor by tearing them down.
Should we still have them do the permits if we have documentation?
Have them fill it out, so we know what they're doing.
Maybe have them fill it out, but I don't think.
But just waive the.
Waive the fee.
Right, I, I agree.
Because like Nia's doing that form, the form she created.
At some point, tearing those down, we're gonna need to seal the sewer lines.
Right.
You know, we're gonna have to find them and seal them.
Just to have the documentation, just to keep, create a paper trail, and then we can just waive the fee.
Right, waive the fee. That's, that's what I'm looking for, is waiving the fee and, you know, not costing them anymore.
John, do we need a consensus vote? Do we need a vote on that?
You vote, I'm curious though, some of these things require them to post bonds to make sure that once they start to finish. And I, you know where it is on Thunderhead?
In our hook-up form?
Okay, but you don't remember what section it falls in. I, I was just trying to check to make sure that they want to part a post-bond.
I don't know if it's in the code or if it's just a form that they created.
I don't know, there was never any bond, did you, Jeff?
The only bond that I know of was when they tapped the sewer.
I don't remember seeing anything about a bond.
Cross out into city property, they have to put a bond up or, you know, surety bond of some sort in order to cover any damage. But then if it's not damaged, it gets given back, but that's the only time I remember.
I'm not saying I've ever read that in the city code. Some cities require they post a bond in case they don't finish the job once they start.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure the people that bought these are gonna finish.
I'm sure.
Two. But then I think there's another guy that's got a house that's gonna get it tore down. He owns the house already. And he's gonna wanna tear it down, and I think we just need to, you know, if he's gonna invest the money to have it tore down and hauled off, we need to waive that fee for him as well. I mean.
Yeah, there's no ordinance attached. Like, I think they just have the form. It doesn't.
I think that's the only thing, if it's a private person that does it, then we need to make sure that the sewer line is sealed. It's marked, at least on the one that we did down here on South Main. The sewer line to the top of the ground where we can see it and we capped it off, you know. I don't know how that'll work with some of these. They're gonna be down in the ground, but they're gonna have to be marked. The ones that we've done, we've tried to get up to where we could see them, you know, so that we don't have encroaching up between roots, everything else.
You can make as a condition a waived fee that they let the city know when they're done though, so that.
We can inspect it, yeah. Yeah, that's what they've done in the past. Yeah. And that's the only thing we ask, you know, is that. We don't worry about too much else. They usually clean the property up pretty good.
It says chapter eight, article ten, but I don't see chapter eight. So, I don't know if it's been changed since they did this.
My book is on two thousand six. I think it's a very immediate responsibility.
I think you're right.
That's why I just, motion.
Motion? I'd make a motion to waive the fees on the demolition permit.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor?
For a period of time, I'm for.
Yeah, for these, you need to say it's specific.
Three months, four months, related to specific property.
But if it's for the.
Properties purchase in the tax sale?
Yeah. Are they gonna be able to do anything with them, with those properties?
Well, they still purchase in the tax sale, they just don't have the keys. So, I wouldn't, I wouldn't give it a specific timeline, just say for properties purchased in the tax sale and then for whatever else that was that was gonna tear up.
I'll remove my second. If you wanna rephrase your motion.
I don't know how we need to do it though.
You, you could do it like this. Give, just make a motion to give city staff discretion to waive permit. Fees relates to demolition of houses that the city feels, it would incentivize that.
I'd make a motion to allow city personnel to waive the fees of the demolition permit, further judgment on allowing any housing, say, John.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion in a second. All in favor? Motion carries. All right, going to adjourn into land bank. Oh, engine for power, my bad. Okay. Jeff, engine for power plant.
This spring, when, when you signed the new contract with Midwest Energy, why, we had a, a, a large approval for looking at maybe doing some upgrades into plant with the money that we saved. We figured over the course of ten years that we'd save a little over a million dollars. And, and I think we're well on the way to doing that as to what we've, we've done in the past few months, but. So, the council, you know, verbally, not as a, not as a group, verbally between the members, had, had kind of told me to do some looking for the possibility of putting another engine in, and upgrading to a, how do I wanna say it? A little easier means of being able to generate in emergency cases and stuff like that with some, with some electronic upgrades. And Jim and I have made a date a couple different times to go out west and look at one. We've never made it out yet. But I, I found an engine. They're hard to come by. We're on, we're on twenty-four hundred, forty-one sixty volt, which any of you that are familiar with electricity, most everything is seventy-two hundred in the country in, in small cities and that, but the city's never upgraded to that. So, generators are kinda hard to come by. And, and the two engines I found, one of them is in an attenuated enclosure, the other one is a skid mount that sits on the floor. And they're both basically the same size, thirteen hundred, sixty KW. But Mike has given some options as to some upgrades that probably should be done at the same time. And, and based on, on a skid mounted engine, I feel like, this is my own personal opinion, I've discussed it with a couple of you, that a skid mounted engine will be better maintained when you can see it than one that's in an enclosure. By the time things go bang, sometimes you're too late. The other reason is that you cannot certify that engine as a Rice-Neshap certified, which means it can only generate a hundred hours. Rice-Nishap certified, which means it can only generate a hundred hours a year in a case of an emergency. So if you're looking at a long-term investment, I would strongly suggest that you look at something that you can put monitors on, just like the stuff that we have here. So, but based on, based on the prices of what we've gotten, and I don't have the price on the muffler yet, and a few little odds and ends hooking up the radiator and that stuff, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood of five hundred thousand. And, and Mike willing to, as far as mid-states goes, to stand by the, the quotes that he's giving you. The engine would be a Caterpillar, it'd be identical to the one that we have in the plant now. They'd run in parallel. And they would basically be automated where they run together, so we could probably teach somebody in a few hours how to put them on and off. And then the third engine, the OP, the, the one that we put in nineteen eighty-one, they would put a, a electronic governor on it where it would synchronize and run with the other two. The big thing with power plant engines, if you've ever been around them very long, when you put them on the panel board, the voltage and the power factor must match on them. If they don't, you start creating generator problems, you create heat in generators and stuff like that. So, these are designed to follow electronically within a parameter of where they'll run. So they can all run just like you're tying three trucks together and pulling them down the road. If you get one that the power factor's bad on, it's like putting the brakes on one and dragging it with the other two. So basically, when you run them, you want them to run together. They all run at different speeds. But when they go to synchronness, then, then what they do is they put more or less fuel into them to, to create the generation that you need. So I, I brought you these two with the anticipation that you would look at them and give me some direction as to where you wanna head. So, anyway. We looked for about four months for these, they're hard to come by.
Where are they coming out of, do you know?
I don't really know. All I know is they're coming out of the Caterpillar network somewhere. And that's, and we found an engine that wasn't, but the Caterpillar guy didn't wanna stand behind it. You know, and he'd had to buy it retail, break it off in us for another ten or fifteen percent. So, I told him to look until he found stuff that I thought would, would last the, the community another forty years, and I really think it will. We did the stuff that we've got in there in nineteen ninety-three, so basically it's coming on thirty years old, not too awful long. So I think it probably bears some upgrades. SPP, if you see the word SPP in there, it means Southwest Power Pool. They, they have been asking us for years and they're gonna require it that we monitor the amount of kilowatts that we generate and push back on the panel board. So, that's basically what that's for too. It would upgrade that stuff too. So, anyway. It figures out about four hundred and forty dollars a kilowatt, four forty-one. The new ones are in the nine fifty to twelve fifty range. So, it's about that price or a little less, with six, seven hundred hours on them, which has not even broke in, so, anyway.
And this is to replace existing one, or is this just...
No, it's to go in, to go in with. It will let those two cats run parallel.
But there's never been one there before?
No, no. Old number three Fairbanks engine we took out years ago. This one, we have a place on the floor, we've set it. There's fuel piping in the floor. There's con- I mean, everything's close. It's as close as you can get. It's within ten foot of the breaker box. It's in a perfect place, really, to set another one in. It'd be the same size, be identical to the one we have down there. The only thing we don't know is the muffler. When we did those three mufflers, when we upgraded those and put catalytic converters in them, I think it was in the two hundred and ten or fifteen thousand dollar range. Maybe some of you were on the council when they did that. They did that right as I came back to work. They were finishing it. But, you know, a third of that or less, so seventy thousand for a muffler, I think you'll still be in the five, five fifty, no, probably not over six hundred. You could pay it off in ten years, a fairly good time with what you're gonna save on that other, so.
We just had that paid for.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Type another one.
Yeah, and Jeff, just to remind us, maybe, I don't know if Ross is maybe on the council then, but the current contract we signed with Midwest Energy, we, we, we signed a contract that would save us quite a bit of money, so we thought about bringing it towards...
Roughly a million dollars in ten years.
But part of it too is we were gonna have to generate a certain amount at a time, and we were kinda close on that, right?
We're with, we're within a few hundred kilowatts, less than a few hundred. We ran already this year. In fact, when I got sick before last council meeting, we ran that day for them. We were the first guys to run. We run at maximum load for one hour to prove to the Southwest Power Pool that we can generate that much. And it's based on your previous year's high plus fifteen percent. So, I could generate about thirty-three hundred and sixty kilowatts, thirty-four hundred, say. We ran thirty-three ten last year, I believe. So fifteen percent onto, that's another four hundred and fifty, so we're riding pretty close. So...
And this would take up the slack to give us more of a buffer area?
Yeah, for that. And, and two, what it's gonna do is it's gonna make it easier for your operators to be able to put that engine on in the dark.
By upgrading the rest of the...
By upgrading this stuff. You know, it's about a twenty-minute time limit now for us to start them. If you, if, and we do the OP because it's easiest for me to start. I've done it for years, so I can do it with my eyes closed. But what this is gonna do is it's gonna allow those caterpillars so that you start, start them as a pair. And every time you close a breaker, it'll never blink the lights, it just picks them up, picks them up, picks them up. When you get to the top end where you think you can generate, then you can put that third engine on, you can take one of the others off. But it's gonna make it, it's gonna simplify it by a hundred percent over the way we do it now. The governor we have now is mechanical.
In the next ten years, it would be easier for our employees to run that plant, not having to know everything.
When they get done with this, I can teach anybody around that table, including Jamie, how to put it on thirty minutes. I mean, it's just that advantageous. And I think, I think it's something that you invest in it now. I think it's gonna last until you guys are old men. I don't think, I think there's gonna come a threshold here where we don't produce any more electricity. Unless you start bringing something in from the outside, you know? And, and no more hours than we put on those engines in a year, there's no reason they won't last forty years. And if we get that Cooper up to running, it's another one you can always put back on. You can run it a hundred hours if you can't do anything else, you know? So I mean, you're up to about five megawatts is where you would be. So, you know, the cats, the cats are a short-life engine compared to the prime movers, but, you know, we put that engine in two thousand and two. It's got four hundred hours on it, four seventy-four, something like that, four hundred and seventy-four hours on it. And we peak shaved with it for quite a few years. But now we have the option that if the, if the price gets too high, that we can come on, which almost happened to us that same day. But all your off-peak load is at twenty-four dollars, is, is the way that it's done, which is about twenty-seven percent cheaper than what you've ever bought it before. And it's a ten-year contract. It's a great deal, it really is. So...
I just think it's a big part of our infrastructure that, you know, over the next ten years, if we're gonna save a million, putting half or six or seven hundred thousand back into it is not, to me, is not that big of a deal. I think it's a smart move.
I think it's a deal that if you want your infrastructure to run during a storm, you know, we've had some times, not in the last fifteen years, but since I went to work here in the eighties, we've had some times we've run five, six, seven days, twenty-four hours a day, you know, to keep us on while we had an ice storm, you know, not lose ten mile a pole on. The year I was a junior in high school in Maxfield, they were out seventeen days. You know, they couldn't get to them. I mean, and they don't have any backup, but we do. And we did, and we ran. You know, we worked shifts just like everybody else did, and we, and the city never lost electricity. So, I think we've come to the point where electricity is more, it's not a convenience anymore. It's, it's a have-to. You know, everything you do requires electricity. So, if you want to, if you want to go ahead and, and, and help your infrastructure, I think now's probably as good a time where you got the money to be able to do it as any. You know, it's pretty well self-sufficient to pay it. I mean, it's made the city millions of dollars over the years by having it. And I just think it would be wrong if you didn't look at, at going ahead and keeping it going. It's been, it's been a tradition here for over a hundred years that we've kept utilities on, so.
That's ninety percent of what that is.
It does. Like I said, it's a big part of it.
What about any kind of like warranty release used? I mean, is there any...
You know, CAT's always been good about taking care of stuff. The other stuff will be brand-new. You know, the radiator and that stuff will be used in that, but I mean, the wiring, the controls, all of that stuff. I'm not gonna say on the equipment. I can't tell you, Ryan. I would say it'd be like a used car, you know? You get what you get, but I think CAT's, CAT's, you know, CAT's pretty funny about that stuff because they don't let you know what goes on in that engine. That's an engine that you just don't know anything about, and they don't want you to know anything about it. And, and you know, they've always been fair with us on that. We've done very little work to that Caterpillar over the last fifteen years, seventeen years, so, for the hours that we've put on it. So I, I think you're gonna get something with seven hundred hours on it. I don't think it's broke in yet, so. Might've come out of a hospital or something like that, that I don't know. You know, don't even know where it's at where we could even look at it. So, I don't know what we'd see if we did.
If you wanna go look, I think I'm flying.
I'd be, I'd be ready to go. I've been ready to go all summer and you wouldn't go. So...
Hasn't been ready yet.
But there is, the city of Johnson City did the same thing that you're looking at. And their superintendent retired, I knew him fairly well, a year ago, and they stepped a guy right in there. Stafford starts, says they can start theirs with a cellphone. They've upgraded their stuff with two cats after they had a fire. I don't wanna go quite that elaborate. Speed costs money, and I think you, you still need to put somebody down there when you run it. I think somebody needs to be there. So...
We had to borrow money for this, but I think it'll...
We'd probably do a general obligation bond, is probably what we could do, I think.
Basically what we've done with the converters and fire trucks and all that stuff, yeah, I mean... I just, me personally, I don't know how we could go wrong by doing it. I mean, especially after signing a ten-year contract that's gonna save us over a million dollars.
Well, you know, we discussed that that night, giving part of that money back to consumers on the ECA charge, and the council felt like it was better off to invest it into the infrastructure as to give it back, so. That's kinda where I came from to look for you, so this is what I've come up with.
And I think updating it where it is so much easier to run. I mean, you gotta, I think right now, if you wanna put the city of St. John back online with the power plant, you better know exactly what you're doing and how to do it, and you don't learn that overnight.
You just better hope Jeff's here.
I have some, I have some guys that are learning, but it's not, it's not a two-day process, you know? I brought guys down there and done it, but it's just, it takes a long time to learn it. I spent a lot of years down there, but I don't have that gift to give to other guys because they, nobody's been here long enough to spend any time with them. How many people have been in the plant?
Oh, I've been in that too.
I've been in there, but it's farcical.
I mean, you...
Yeah, I go through and I'm just kinda overwhelmed, but...
I mean, there's a lot of stuff in there.
There's a lot of stuff.
There is, yeah.
And if you don't know how to do it, I...
I've been in there with some of my students, and Jeff showed them, and I still don't know much.
Did we start that Caterpillar the day you were down there? We do it off the keyboard.
Yeah.
We started off the keyboard on the console. They wanna upgrade that stuff too. I mean, it's pretty unique how they work anymore. It really is. And they're, and, and the design of them with the software and stuff, you know, it's another one of those deals. You know, you can't run them without computers. I mean, it's, it's just amazing what you can do, but we ramp them up and slow them down with a computer. It's just a really neat deal, but, but the old ones aren't that way. The old ones are done by hand, so.
I guess I better ask you, but before we know anything else, we need to know how much the muffler, wherever you call it, catalytic converter...
I'll get a hold of Cliff and get that figured out. I suppose we better see what we can do on finance too and see if that works. Gonna have to come through with that, so. I'll get, I'll, I'm supposed to be on vacation. I'll get hold of Cliff tomorrow. I'm never on vacation. I try it, but it doesn't work.
If we wanna go look at Johnson, we can be there in about an hour, take some cool morning and go.
Yeah, yeah, I'd really still like to go out and see those. They're, they're quite a size.
It's awesome sitting.
But I got four plates.
Just rent a Lear and have you flies out. Just rent a Lear and have you flies out?
No, no.
No?
I think, I think we need to look into, look at the finance and get a, get a final price on it, and...
I'm gonna, I, and what I'm gonna do, if you're okay with the council, I'm gonna tell Cliff to try and hang on to that skid-mounted engine as long as he can. And see if we can get some answers on the other stuff that we wanna know. Before we go any farther, and that way we'll kinda hold a tail on it maybe, and they won't release it, so.
You know, and I'd even be okay if you do that, and then if you get some answers and we need to have a meeting sooner than our next one, just to decide this.
If we can just get, if we can just get hung on to the engine, the rest of it's a piece of cake. We just...
I mean, I would be all...
If we're moving forward with good faith, you'd think that would mean something.
Well, and CAT's been awful good to us, you know? And I mean, you guys know it, in the business you're in, the two you can deal with and trust and who you can't. I've used these guys, you know? I mean, I've been friends with them for thirty years and they're not gonna screw us over. They're just not going to. They got too many of these in the country. They're not gonna take anybody. They're just not. So...
As soon as you get the final price, I can give the funding options available.
And if we do need to have a special meeting, notify council as quickly as possible.
You know, there's gonna be some tail-end stuff, some piping and some of that stuff that we're not gonna be able to pinpoint to the dime. But we're not going very far with it. We're gonna have to build a snout for the other one to make sure we get the heat away from this radiator, some things like that, thousand dollars here, a few, you know, Wichita sheet and that, or places like that. But I mean, most of it, we can get a pinpoint on it now. So, all right. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. All right, recess out of a regular council meeting and move into land bank.
Land bank meeting, looks like we have a ten-minute executive session to discuss acquisition of property. To include all of us around the table to reconvene at nine eleven. Got a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor? All opposed, passes.
St. John's hot spot.
Call the land bank meeting back to order?
I'd make a motion for city staff to pursue the purchasing of property discussed.
Under the terms, does it?
Under the terms listed.
You got a motion?
Second.
Second. Any more discussion? All in favor? All opposed, motion carries. Now we need a motion to amend the agenda.
Make a motion to amend the agenda for sale of acquired property.
I got a motion, second. All in favor? Passes. So, one of the properties that we've purchased on East First Street at the tax sale, there's an individual that wants to purchase that property. He had bid it up to a thousand dollars. He's still willing to pay a thousand dollars for it. Now, we did pay twenty-eight hundred dollars for the property. But he is also gonna go in and tear the house down and build new on it. Now, I know, we don't actually hold a deed to it, right?
Yeah, that, that's what Jamie and I talked about earlier. And the, and I don't know what was settled on the tax sale, but there has to be, the court will, the sheriff filed a return yesterday, and that return basically says that this is what we did. And then the court will review that, confirm that sale. And then once the court confirms that sale during the confirmation, it actually orders the sheriff to file a sheriff's deed. And at that point, then, the city will own the property subject to a twelve-month right to appeal, or what amounts to appeal, but somebody can come through and say the sale, there was irregularities or it did fall a statute or whatever. I don't think that is gonna happen here. It's awful often, given the, the properties that the city acquired, but... So, I don't know when the, when this will happen. Judge Keely, who's the judge on this case, is scheduled for a docket like the sixth of September or something, so I imagine the confirmation will... September or something, so I imagine the confirmation will prove that.
So are we allowed to sell the property under a contract?
You could do a contract subject to the city receiving a sheriff's deed. Yeah, I mean, that can be done, but the other thing is.
Nowhere can we know about the property until we have the deed.
Yeah, he, he couldn't do anything with the property at this point.
Kind of timeframe a little bit?
Again, I don't know.
I mean, 90 days or, or 10 months?
No, I, I would imagine at that court appearance on the 6th or whenever it's scheduled, that the confirmation will be done. I don't know how long it's going to take the sheriff to walk a deed to this.
They said that we would, that nobody would receive a deed until somewhere around the 6th of October.
The 6th of October, so they're way ambitious.
But I do know the one that is interested on the one on First Street could have it done by the end of this month.
That's, that's all, as, as long as the agreement says that if the city comes to not own the property, that's his own problem. That's the issue is I don't want the city to be held harmless if it turns out that the city doesn't get sheriff's.
Well, I would think because we also tried as a council to get that property taken care of, and we never ever did, I don't think anybody is going to fight the fact that we bought it under the tax auction.
Maybe, I mean, it's going, it's like going in and.
You still have to put that we're not liable, I mean, additional questions.
Right, it's like going in and remodeling a house before you've got the title committed and a house closing. I mean, you, you do it and you find out that it's not going to close.
That's a risk whoever's going to take for getting $100.
If you were to take that risk, you would buy it under tax auction.
Well, and the other thing is, I mean, I'm involved in an issue related to tax sale already. I'm not confident that it was done 100% correctly, so. And again, I, I'm not one, but my, I guess, without any kind of assurances that the city's not going to be held liable if this guy goes in and tears down Grandma's house.
So maybe there was a contract up that stated that he was okay with it?
That it would basically say that he's got a right to enter the property. The city's not necessarily giving him the right that wants, basically it just said the city, once the city gets sheriff's deed, the city's willing to give him the sheriff's deed upon payment of whatever checking and title, but. Firework, I don't know what to do with it. I think just insurance and all kinds of others, if somebody gets it on there. I don't even, I mean, arguably, the only person that, the person that controls the property right now is the sheriff, because the person that owned it lost the right of redemption.
He's in a hurry, you know?
He's in a hurry because he only has a certain amount of time to use the equipment before it's tied up again.
I don't, I don't see that. I, I agree with John, I just think it's just too much, too fast to everything.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, if, if he wanted to push it along that fast, I don't know if he did, but they should have got it, they should have bought it, and then that would be an half a step out of the way.
The last time we handled a county tax sale was 2010. I was looking at some of the payrolls this afternoon, and I would, I think we, I think it moved a little quicker than October, but if, if that's when they intend to set that hearing date.
No, that was when we, they said that you should receive a deed, a sheriff's deed by somewhere around the 6th of October.
The only thing I could do, because I've entered my appearance in the case in that other matter, is as soon as I see that the confirmation has occurred, I mean, it's going to be one deed with all the property listed, and it'll be filed on record, the original before the county receives a copy of it. And the only thing I can do is that it might have been, I just don't. And I, I would send 100 emails and call them 50 times and not get a response on it, but I could try to acquire from.
Well, I mean, the thing about it is, is we own the property. I, it may be one of them thinks that he's not interested in October, and we're stuck with it, and we tear it down ourselves.
I guess if he wants to assume the risk, put it in writing that it's on, it's on him, but I think that's a can of worms.
Yeah, I, I'm okay with it as long as the city has no ties to it, but I don't know how you can make that out of the.
It's just, I mean, I'll share, I got the same kind of squirmy feeling when I was talking with Scott about putting a firework stand in the building next to the city hall, and I told Jamie, something happened over there, you're losing everything. I mean, it, you just don't know what someone's having to compare the best you can, but.
They should all work out, but things don't always do what they should.
That's how I want to make a living.
I don't know that waiting 60 days is going to, if it's going to scuttle the deal, it just scuttles up.
You wouldn't think 60 days is life-changing?
I don't think 60 days is.
And it may not be.
And I think it'd make it, you know, it'd be cleaner for everybody.
I think so too. I, I just think.
And I know there's some interest on West Second on some of the properties that we bought. There's an individual interested in it.
Right.
Maybe after we get the deeds, we just revisit it then and just.
Yeah, the, the individual that's interested in the property on West Second is willing to pay what the land bank has paid for the property. He just wants.
Well, I don't, I.
Yeah.
The last half.
Well, he doesn't seem to think, he seems that he can rehabilitate them, but.
I don't know. I mean, I, I would just like to, when we have possession of, I mean, and maybe we have possession of them now, when we can legally get into them and look to see whether we feel that they're salvageable.
Right.
You know, because if we go in and there's holes in the floors and the walls, and half of it's fallen down, and termite infested.
Right.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to sell it to somebody for them to try and redo it, and then we're back in the same spot.
Okay. Well, I could pass all this information on to him and let him know, because he's just looking, really wants to know what a timeframe he's looking at. Because if he gets the property, he doesn't want to wait so long that it becomes winter months, and then he can't work on it. He wants to be able to work on it right away, but.
Or at least probably 60 days.
It's probably the best thing right there to do for both parties, so, okay.
Yeah. I mean, I feel comfortable with the one on First Street because he wants to tear it down. He doesn't want to try to fix it up. He wants to tear it down and build new.
We never, we've never been in the land banks, haven't really been in this position, position, one, one of, one or two properties at a time. Technically, we have to maintain a list in whatever form you want, just have to say what the land bank owns. But the other thing is, when it comes to some of these cleanup properties, don't forget, you can put a stipulation on those deeds that, that cleanup has to occur. What you do is you put it in the contract, you make that, that provision survive the terms of that contract, so that it goes on forever, and then you refer to that contract in a deed. But, but the problem with that is, is if somebody is not going to return the property, okay, based on the terms of that, that contract and deed, you're required to go through basically a quiet title action, and have the court declare that that property is returned back to you, or back to the city, to the land bank. So, I mean, you're not, it's not simple. There's a process to it. Attorney's got to, they've got to get their cut of everything.
Yes, you do.
So with that, like, if they, if we were to go into an agreement with someone about a house, and they say worked on it for 30, 60 days but never finished, that property would come back to us and they would just be out what they did?
It, it would, it would, depending on how the language is, it could revert back to the city.
Right.
And, and, you know, same thing is, you know, you could put in there it has to be used, or it has to be torn down and left vacant, or used as a farm, or, or it has to be used as a single-family residence, because then you have issues where people try to light up a house, whatever. And, and it's not being used according to what, what it was, and that's what the land bank was created, so you have these controls for the stipulations.
Yeah.
Right, so you, the city can go in, the land bank can go in and say it's going to revert, ownership's going to revert to the land bank, they can walk away from it, or what usually happens is if the court has a claim that they didn't revert, maybe it's the law.
Well, I see no prop, is purchase that there's any solution to either of them just to dump the ground?
Yeah, the only thing I had concern about was that former Trolleyana, did we get those, the Trolleyana properties?
Yeah. Well, he still has two.
Well, I mean, if somebody, one of them was a Duke Blanks or something.
Well, there's two, two houses on one lot. Like, we bought two lots, but three houses.
We bought two lots and there's three houses.
Somebody not knowing what they're doing, I think they could.
And the one house, well, yeah, the one house, I, I don't know if it's the right house, but no one's lived there since like 2010.
Oh, it's been longer than that.
No.
The one right by the alley, there hasn't probably been a residence in there since.
Or maybe it was 2000.
Early 2000s.
Yeah, maybe.
99s, maybe, 90, 99.
I just feel like that's way too long without an occupant to try to.
I'm sure someone's on it.
I did call his attorney, bragged that after all that stuff we went through, the city now purchased the property.
I wish we could get together too.
Well, I guess we kind of got our answers on them. We could let him know all of the other one though. I guess no further business, so. Entertaining a session during the land bank.
Second.
Motion second. All in favor? Motion carries.
Reconvene this meeting of the city council at 9:24. We have a 10-minute executive session to discuss possible hire.
Can we do these together?
I was going to say, can we do the two executive sessions together?
Sure.
You make the motion, is it all the same people?
No.
No, it's three different, three different people, really.
It'd be two different hires.
But I mean, it's all the same subject, right? Hiring an employee.
Well, two of them are, and one of them is a rose.
Yeah.
Can we do them all at the same time?
You just do executives, just state what they are. Things like the motion says, or you do executive session related to hire, like, related non-elected personnel related to possible hire of employees, and then executive session related to non-elected personnel following employee performance evaluation.
But do we need 30 minutes total for?
Oh, no. No. I'd think 10 or 15 should do it, I really do.
I'd make a motion for a 15-minute executive session to discuss non-elected personnel